Thank you, Tom. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Board of Finance. And let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So Amy has a starring role tonight. And so why don't we start with the Finance Director's Report?
Okay, so first up is just an updated list of the grants and donations, only a couple since the last time I reported out. One of the major topics of interest lately is the American Rescue Plan Funds. So these is emergency funding that was released by the federal government. It's going to be passed through the state. The town is expected to receive about $2.5 million. And the Board of Education originally reported they were going to anticipate receiving $991,000. However, we received notification from the State Department of Education today that their allocations that they sent out were not correct. And we will be receiving $966,442 on the Board of Education side. Just an overview of some of the eligible uses for this funding. Providing services to mitigate this spread of COVID, responding to any revenue losses, improvements to water and sewer infrastructure, services to address any health disparities, anything to address the negative economic impacts, premium pay to essential workers, and improvements related to the broadband infrastructure. Currently, staff is putting together a proposed list of uses for these funds, which will be discussed at future Board of Selectment and Board of Education meetings. Based on the discussions and the proposals, we'll review the applicable sections of the detailed guidance to ensure the funds can be used as desired. One example is there was interest in utilizing the funds for revenue loss from our investment income. However, in the call that I was on last week, we are not eligible. You have to look at your revenue loss across all funds. It cannot just be restricted to one account or where you see the revenue loss. So we are going to have to dig into some of the details of their guidance depending on how the boards determine that they want to use the funds. And then the Latimer Lane renovation project, the project specifications.
Hi, excuse me. Before we move on, just a couple of things on the American Rescue Plan Act. First of all, thank you for that. I think a lot of the community is going to have a lot of interest in that. And I know the Biden administration is pushing a lot of community input and transparency. So I think this is a great first step. In terms of the Board of Finance's role in this, I think we're pretty limited, as I understand it. And of course, we'll be looking to you and council for guidance. But I think our role is pretty much limited to the appropriation, and we don't have line item control of this appropriation because it's the federal appropriation. So our role will be mostly the administrative appropriation for the total amount. And then, of course, transparency and reporting, spending as we do with all accounts. We can help with the transparency and communication, and of course, give any feedback as part of community input that the boards seek, is my understanding of it. But as we get more guidance on that, can you give that to us from the Board of Finance? And then the second thing that is out there but not definitive at this time, there is some possibility that we'll get some community grants and our county allocation. And those initial projections are very large. And so there may be quite a bit of money coming into the towns. Those are not definite yet. And also, there may also be some library allocations. So I know Amy had mentioned she doesn't have any formal notification of that. But we did get some notification from Representative Hampton's office that those numbers are being considered and pushed about. So I just wanted to make the board alert to them. The numbers are large. They could be close to $5 million additional dollars for Simsbury. But that's also the county dollars may be an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to work on regional initiatives because all the Farmington Valley towns are getting projected, may get projected, large allocations there if the legislature proceeds as estimated.
Lisa, quick question while you're on ARPA. And I just don't know the administration of it, but is it, does everything go through the state, do you know? Or is any of it directed directly at local governments?
So there are, I mean, I'll let Amy weigh in there too. But there are entitlement towns and non-entitlement towns, and entitlement towns are over 50,000, and they get direct deposits from the federal government. We got ours through the state, and then the county allocations would again be through the state. So Amy, did you want to add to that?
Nope, that's exactly how it's going to play out. Okay, so now on to the Latimer Lane renovation project. An item of interest during the budget discussion was the project specifications. Tecton did do a presentation at the last Board of Education meeting on the more detailed project specifications. And that presentation was shared with you all in the communications section of your packet for review, since it was an item of interest.
So just one question on that. I thought the timing of this was sort of interesting. It came right after we had approved the budget.
They had been working on it. They were anticipating that we were going to do it at this meeting to do the Oh, my gosh, I just lost it.
Do the actual recommendation to the referendum was supposed to be this meeting?
Yeah. That's why how they had planned it out. So it came right after you guys had done it.
Okay. But my real question is that these drawings and specifications that have been fleshed out more than what we had before are all still represented by the price and the amount that we have approved, right? So there wasn't anything here that And it's funny, all of that, having visited the school, I didn't actually get that we were building a new gym onto the end of the building, which I think is cool. I think that will make for a better overall experience for them. So I just, the drawings were helpful.
Well, that's it for the Finance Director's Report. You want me to just move into the quarterly?
Keep going.
All right. So on the town side for the quarterly, onto the general fund revenues, just a few items of interest. We're at 99, almost 99.5 million in our revenues to date, or 97% of budget. There's a few main drivers for this. The tax department is already at 100% collections. We're actually over 100%, which is in line with our billing period. The building department is already $580,000 over budget, or 216%. There's actually additional money coming within the building department budget. We do our charges for services here. The building department permit fees alone are already $620,000 over budget.
How much did we raise that budget for '21, '22?
I think we raised it to 50 or 850. I don't remember, something along those lines.
Okay.
And then under the Finance Department, of course, not some good news here. We are at 67% of budget, mainly from the unanticipated COVID relief funds that we received totaling about $200,000. The department's main source of income is the interest on the investments, and as we know, those were not doing well. As previously reported, we're not going to hit our budget, and currently, we're about $350,000 under budget for our investment income. Some more good news on the town clerk side. The recording fees are already over budget by about $60,000, and the conveyance taxes are already at 100% of budget due to the Moving on to the expenditure side.
Amy, one quick question on reserves, on revenues. Do you have a projected or reserve level yet? Are we still on target for projected reserves? Where are we with that?
So I was going to do that in the second part, but basically, we'll probably be adding about $700,000 to reserves at the end of the year on the town side.
I'm sorry, 700, you said? Thank you.
Yep. So last quarter, it was about 600,000. Now we're at about 700,000 for excess for surplus to add to reserves.
And what is the percent then?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It's going to be in a 16, 17% range.
Yeah, if we, just going forward, if you could put a projected reserves level in your reports, that would be helpful as a percent.
So on the expenditure side, we had some unanticipated COVID funding. We had the increased building department fees, recording fees. We had some savings and conference and education savings. And then we had staff turnover and vacancies during the year. So all of this combined with the other items I just went through, which I actually just mentioned again, so never mind that. Again, about $700,000 to the good by the end of the year. Moving on to the Simsbury Farms Fund. Right now, our revenues are in excess of expenditures of about $239,000. Again, this is mainly related to the golf income. You'll see under the Recreation Programs and the Simsbury Farms complex that compared to the same year, same time prior year, we are down. But then you will also see under the Expenditure section that we are down there as well. So those are in line. And then under the golf course fees, you can see that compared to the same time last year, we're $180,000 $180,000 to the good. So overall, we are about $110,000 to the better compared to the same time last year. Moving on to the Health Insurance Fund, a couple of items here. You'll see under the Claim Section, we budgeted about $14.7 million, and we're currently at about $10 million of claims. If claims continue as they have, we will have potential savings of about $1.7 million in claims. As of right now, our reserve levels are about $5.5 million, or 37% of expected claims. So if we do add that $1.7 million to the reserve, we'll be well over 40% of the realized claim savings for the end of the year. So some potential there. And that's all I have for major highlights on the town side unless you guys have any other questions.
That's a good report.
I just have one question on the capital projects. Are you going to get to those or?
I was going to, but if you have a question, I'll take it.
Yeah, the question is just, could you, in future reports or after this meeting, just send us what year the projects were approved and the original appropriation, if we could add that to the chart? And are there any projects that are, have exceeded the three-year mark where we have to do an extra appropriation?
What year the projects were approved and Anything else?
No.
Okay. Want me to just move on to Board of Ed, Rob?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. So a quarterly update on the Board of Education funds. Some highlights on the revenue side that had not been previously reported out. The Open Choice Academic and Social Support Grant. In April, we received notification that we'll be receiving an additional award of $7,000 to be used by the end of the year. On the Open Choice Attendance and Early Learning Grant, Simsbury was awarded $1.5 million, actually, $1,543,000. This was previously reported at $1,518,000, so a slight increase of almost $26,000 there. On the Special Education Grant, we have a final award of about $1.8 million. Previously, it was reported that we were going, we were anticipated getting $1.9 $1.9 million. So it's an overall decrease of about $50,000. This is because the state decreased the reimbursement allocation from 83.46 to 80.31. And then just a small grant that we received, the Talent Development or the Team Grant, was awarded for $4,302. Compared to the same time last year, it was about a $700 decrease. Onto the expenditure side, the majority of the fluctuations from last year to this year, as you can imagine, were primarily COVID-related. We are anticipating a deficit on the Special Education side of about $200,000. I can't say it's mainly contributing, mainly related to COVID. I don't know the specifications, but I know it's partially attributable, attributed to COVID. Some of the direct expenses that we're seeing for the COVID are the hiring of the additional teachers for distance learning and the additional custodians during the year, the cleaning supplies and the technology equipment. Those were the major ones. And then we had a lot of indirect expenses as well. So mainly related to staff time, we had additional special, special education costs and tutors for the struggling students. We had more expensive air filters for the HVAC system. Vendors are charging us for their COVID costs. When our teachers are out in quarantines, we have to hire substitutes, so things of that nature where it's harder to quantify. So we had, as I reported previously, implemented a spending freeze on the Board of Education side. And we're expecting a deficit around $900,000. You all had appropriated the use of the non-lapsing, about $650,000 to help cover this, and then the remainder will be covered with grants. So we're hoping that we are just going to squeak by within budget. And hopefully that happens. Any questions on that report?
No, not for me.
You want to take the next one, Rob, in the setting of the mill rate?
Yeah, thank you. So as it turns out, it was a good thing we didn't want to have a meeting right after the referendum to set the mill rate because we would have still been there the following day helping count ballots. So I'm resisting making a joke about this because it would become on the public record, and I won't. But nonetheless, I'm glad we had this opportunity to do that, to not be hanging around waiting for that vote. But the budgets all passed with substantial majorities. So based on that, we would, you know, our final act in this whole budget process is to actually set the mill rate. Since nothing changed at the, as a result of the referendum, we should, as a board, then confirm the mill rate increase from 3.0 where are we, 3709 to 3741 for the town. I note that the Fire District, which I actually thought when we first heard it was going to hold the mill rate at 119, and then there were some indications it was 120, has actually increased it to 122, which takes what would have otherwise been a 0.86 increase in the, to about 0.91. Their increase was almost 2.5%. So we, apropos of everything or nothing at the same time, we have no control over this. Don't know what drives that, but nonetheless, the combined tax mill rate will go from up to, I guess now, to 3863. So what we need to do is have a motion to set the mill rate at 3741 for the town. And a second? Please.
Art seconds.
An art second, okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Next is the supplemental appropriation for the North End Sidewalk Project. And, you know, I'm sure we've all read through this. My only real question is just to be crystal clear that when it went, when the price went up, the grant went up. Correct? So there's no additional impact on the town?
Basically, the state reviewed the project plans and said, we want you to add to it, and they gave us the additional funding for it. So we just need the formal appropriation.
Okay. Any questions about this discussion? Need a motion then to approve the supplemental appropriation request for North End sidewalks as presented?
I'll move that.
And a second?
A second.
Second by Derek. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, unanimous. All right. Approval of Tax Collector Suspense List. My only question is, this $88,000, how does that compare to previous years? Have any idea whether this is a big year, a little dear?
I'm going to say it's either about the same or it's less.
Felt a little less. I, I, I don't know why. I didn't go back and look, but.
No, I think it's usually around like six figures. And then since we implemented the tax sale policy, I know it's come down. So I can't remember when we implemented the policy compared to last year's suspense list, but I think it's either around the same or it's a little less.
And just, we say it every year, but I'll say it again, these, we're not, we're not forgiving these debts. We're not forgetting that they're owed. They still are represented by tax liens on vehicles and tax liens on property. And if the property is ever sold or the vehicle is ever sold, the tax will be paid. But this administratively allows the tax collector to move to these into a separate column. So it's, it's not a forgiveness of these unpaid taxes. So I, we're looking for a motion effective today to approve the suspense list at $88,866.42 and authorize the tax collector calling O'Connor to transfer these accounts, pardon me, to the suspense tax. Need a motion? By Derek. Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Administratively, I'm supposed to sign this. How do you want me to do that? Sign it and scan it to you?
Perfect.
All right. Great. All right. Next up is the request to establish a special revenue fund.
So back in 2010, the Senior Center received about $71,000 as they were listed as a beneficiary in a will. And this money was subsequently deposited into the Social Services Contribution Special Revenue Fund. In 2011, the Board of Selectmen had approved the use of these funds for the construction or the improvements to the senior center. So Social Services is not able to utilize these funds. They have to be held. So the Social Services Director came to me and asked if we could move these funds out of her special revenue fund because she has to manually calculate the balance. She doesn't want to spend into it by accident. And I was completely supportive of this request. I think she had some valid points. And then in addition, as staff transitions, if this money is lost sight of, and whoever took over in the next position didn't know about it, they would spend it outside of its intended purpose. So the formal request is easier to take these monies out of the special revenue fund and put them into a new special revenue fund. Or we can put them into the Capital Reserve Fund and assign them with their stated purpose. Or if the board would like to create a formal capital project, we can move it into the Capital Project Fund and state the capital project to be for the construction or major improvements of the Senior Center.
So in terms of discussion, you know, I think Amy's given us three options. I'm not a fan of yet another special revenue fund since we don't have one. I think it's, this is a reserve for a future capital project. So that in my mind, the best place to put this Capital Reserve Fund with a designation on it. And since we really don't know where or how we could spend the money at the Senior Center today, I don't think it makes sense to go ahead and approve, although I, you know, as soon as they have something, we would be certainly open to that. So, and it's probably a Board of Selectmen decision anyway, right? To recommend a capital project for the Senior Center. But in the meantime, I think the right place to park it is in the Capital Reserve Fund with a designation.
Move that.
Anybody want to second that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll second that. I think our objective in commenting on the seconding is to pay due respect to the donor and to simplify the management as much as we possibly can.
Absolutely. You're right. All right. This was a generous gift bequeathed through a will, as I understand it. And it should be put to a good use, not a hurried use by a project. You know, it's been a while since the money was received, but should absolutely be designated so that we recognize that gift. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Passed.
Is that good enough for you, Amy, in terms of the option, that motion?
That's exactly what I would have done.
Okay. All right. Retirement Plan Subcommittee Quarterly Update. But we don't have Kevin here.
No.
You're going to do it, Derek?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to take it away here.
All right, good.
Yeah, no, I, I, I was at the last meeting, and you know, and it kind of followed what, you know, our typical protocol was. Chris Kachmar and Tyler Polk, now of Fiducient is their company name. They've gone through a couple of transitions here. But formerly known as Demeo Schneider, they are now, I think, they finalized their merger and are known as Fiducient. So, you know, some really interesting stuff. They start with kind of a macro level that I'll just share quickly. We did talk about, and interestingly, you brought it up at the beginning, Lisa, that, you know, on the American Rescue Plan Act, you know, about $1 billion out of the $2 billion will be sent to individuals in the form of stimulus, extended unemployment benefits and housing assistance. And, you know, this is, this is separate, of course, from the from the Infrastructure and Climate Plan, which, which I believe is roughly another $2 trillion. And in light of all this, really, what I'm getting at is, you know, interest rates and inflation are expected to move, you know, move higher. It really is, you know, the 40-year fixed income bull run is coming to an end here. You know, more people moving out of US Treasuries and into equities, alternatives, hard assets, you know, such as real estate. And it's, it's putting a lot of pressure on, on equities and PEs. So, but no one, you know, people with negative interest rates across, across the globe, you know, people really have nowhere else to make a return, and so they're going into equities. That was just kind of more macro level. In terms of the plans, the Simsbury Pension Plan, both actually government employees and Board of Ed employees, the value, value of the assets year over year from June 2020 to 2019, or 19 to 20, were generally flat, but really well-funded, both over 70% funded there. And then the Police Retirement Fund was up a little year over year and very well-funded at about 80%. So good news there. The one thing that we did take action on, let me just go here. So in terms of our asset allocation and our investments, it's broken out into, you know, basically, you know, a handful of investment types. So you have short-term liquidity, which is basically like a money market account. And then you have more fixed income bonds, domestic equity, international equity, real estate, and then inflation protection. So the one area of focus that we were looking at, and this had come up in, in previous meetings, was the fixed income side, where Templeton Global Bond R6, which is one of four investments within the fixed income allocation, really just hadn't been performing well. And this is something that had been brought up by Fiducient and Chris on previous calls. So the board took, made, basically took action recommending to the Board of Finance that rather than replace Templeton Global Bond R6 with another invest, another manager, because it's only 2.3% of the overall investment allocation, what we decided to do was basically spread their allocation back over the remaining four fixed income, I'm sorry, the remaining three other fixed income managers. So that's Metropolitan West, Western Asset Core, and BlackRock. And so that'll be, that'll be basically spread pro rata over the remaining three fixed income managers. So that, that was one thing that we had taken action on. And then, secondly, you know, the subcommittee recommended that all the changes and updates that Lisa spent a ton of time on, thank you, Lisa, on the Deferred Contribution Plan Investment Policy, basically be set in stone. So that was the kind of the second action item. And so those recommendations are now, I believe, in front of the Board of Finance to take action on. Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the gist of the meeting. Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the gist of the meeting. Um, and, you know, I have, um, I have materials if anybody is interested, but I think the Board of Finance gets those, gets those sent out as well. So, uh, happy to field any questions, if anybody has any.
When are we scheduled to have the next presentation to the full Board of Finance by the Financial Advisor? Just, I thought we sort of had them on the agenda twice a year. Is that true or not?
Mm-hmm. So the last one, um, was during budget season, and we, we went that meeting. So if you want, I can schedule them for either your next meeting, get caught up, or we can just do the next one, which I believe would be towards the end of the summer.
Let's do it towards the end of the summer, that's fine.
Not in August, though.
Okay. Derek, do we, do we need to vote on those, uh, changes to eliminate?
Yeah, I, 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 I guess I don't know where the recommendation stands, or if, um, you know, we can just go ahead and, and, and move on those. Um, Amy, I'll leave that to you to kind of.
Yes, so the Retirement Plan Subcommittee did make the formal recommendations to the Board of Finance, so now the Board of Finance can vote on them.
Okay.
All right, so we need a motion to accept the changes that Derek just described to eliminate Templeton Global Bond and, uh, spread those over the three remaining fixed income managers.
I'll move acceptance. I commend the, uh, report, Derek, having sat through that meeting. I think you summarized it very, very accurately, so I move acceptance.
Great. And a second?
Second that.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That was a process. And then the next thing is the, um, Investment Policy for the, uh, Defined Contribution Plan. And, you know, again, you guys talked about this, Derek, at the Subcommittee. Uh, you worked with Amy, you made some recommendations, Lisa looked at it, had some additional recommendations. And I think those are all in line, just really trying to just match up the Defined Contribution Plan Investment Policy with the Defined Benefit Policy that we did about a year ago, and make sure it's all in line with the Memorandum of Understanding between, uh, the three boards. So everybody get a chance to look at, uh, Lisa's additional edits today, should have gotten that midday.
Yeah, there's just one, um, additional change, Rob. I know Amy left in, the, um, Town Manager is responsible for selecting the Plans Administrator, and she checked with council. I also called council, and there was some confusion there about what that means by the Town Administrator. Obviously, we took a vote to approve ICMA as the Plans Administrator. So we're assuming that language refers to town employees, but Bob said he would work in the future to clarify that language. So I would just recommend that we eliminate it for now and work with council, because that may be more appropriate for the MOU. It's, obviously doesn't have anything to do with investment.
So do I, what is your recommendation as to the language that was submitted?
So I would just, for now, eliminate the Town Manager is responsible for selecting the Plans Administrator, because Councilor will be reviewing that language to clarify that it's, um, obviously, we used to appoint Tom Cook to it, and obviously Maria can appoint whoever she wants as the Town Administrator, but so that the language isn't confusing, uh, because it looks like it reads like ICMA, which would, is a vendor, which would fall.
That's the difference between the external manager and the internal administrator, right?
Yeah, we just went through a very effective process, we had unanimous consent, it goes through multiple approvals. Even after we approve it, the Board of Selectman has to approve the actual contract, so there are multiple reviews. We had a process that worked that's consistent with the MOU, so we'll just be clarifying that language.
Okay, so why don't you make the motion, Lisa, and then we'll ask for, if you want to, all right?
So I would move to approve the Graft, um, Defined Contribution Investment Policy Statement with the elimination of the words in number three, "The Town Manager is responsible for selecting the Plans Administrator." And note for the record that Councilor is reviewing the language for future consideration.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I will.
Seconded by Art, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, thank you. And thank you, as always, for Lisa's, uh, great attention to detail on all of these things, which is, uh, it, it's helpful, really helpful. All right, uh, Capital Project Budget Work Group. So this was, um, something that I felt like we should think about as a Board of Finance, Board of, uh, Selectmen and Board of, uh, Ed to streamline or, or move the capital part of our budgeting process out of the vortex, which is the operating budget, public hearing, referendum, all of that, and try to get more attention on it earlier in the process, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, I think it, it's not an afterthought, but it does get left to the very end. Second, the capital budget is, these are all long-term projects, and they don't rely on our, having a clear, a, a really clear idea of how the previous year's budget worked out, like we do with the operating budget. You know, when we're setting next year's budget, uh, limits for an operating budget, it's good to know whether we were accurate or not for the current year. Less, less, quite, a little bit less so for the capital budget. So I suggested at, um, public audience of the Board of Selectmen that we form a work group, uh, that would include, um, the staff, Maria, uh, Amy, uh, probably Neil, uh, Matt, uh, and then two representatives from each of the boards to try to get this started in the summer, uh, so that we could have a capital budget, hopefully by December, before we jump into the operating budget in January, February. So I just bring that up as a discussion item, we don't have to take any action tonight, but to get your reaction.
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, just in general, I, I listened very intently to your comments. I thought they were very well-done, very, very well-presented. Uh, they were a bit calmer than I might have been, but, uh, I commend you for that as well. Uh, yeah, I think this is a good idea. I, one of the frustrations is that so much of our budget is in salaries. And when you have, take one of two arbitration recommendations and you run with it, I mean, here you're supposed to be crafting both appropriations and revenue when, what, 70% depends, is, is, of, I mean, well over half of your budget is already taken care of before you even get into the arena. Um, and, you know, anything we can do to create some understanding and some running room, uh, especially because we're going to be looking at some additional bonding requests coming down the road. So, uh, I, both in terms of, uh, but, uh, spirit and, and content, I thought your, your remarks were very well-done, and I hope we can start to get some earlier consensus on this process. Uh, and I just note my frustration that over half of it's already done before we even suit up.
Yeah, I know. I know.
I'll add, um, Rob, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's a really good idea to sort of just understand what the rules of the road are, because there are rules of the road, what are rating agencies look at, how much we can afford, what complots with current policy, and to really use this as an opportunity to say, hey, if we're thinking about changing the policy, we want to do it over the summer, not during the budget process.
Right.
That we can have those discussions early. And then in terms of how we communicate what the projects are, I, I think it might be worthwhile looking at the review and operating costs and how we're budgeting for that. And I think, uh, it, it could be really a, a great opportunity to get everyone on the same page and just clarity of presentation and communication and understanding of what policies are existing and how those are going to impact our choices. Um, and then if there's any recommendations to make a policy change, we can have that at that level before the budget process, not during the budget process, whenever we're freshed.
Right.
That makes a lot of sense, and I would actually volunteer to do that, if you're looking for volunteers. Not yet, I know, today.
Well, you would have been voluntold if you hadn't, so. Uh, so let's, um, let's think about that. I guess we, we should think about how we communicate that in a more formal way to each of the other two boards. You know, my comments were made in public hearing, and there was no response, um, nor could there be at that meeting, but I think we want to figure out if we want to make a recommendation and get it on their agendas to discuss, and then try to take action as early as July on this project, you know, if we can. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Well, well, let's, let's bring that up in, in June, and maybe, Amy, you and I can work on a structure around that to make a, you know, formal recommendation to the other two boards in time that they can put it on their agendas. Okay. All right, next up is the Approval of the Minutes. Um, I have to say the minutes of that, uh, almost three-hour meeting, maybe, well, actually more than that, it went till 9:30, um, were done, I think, in a great, very well fashion. Uh, they, uh, captured the essence of the meeting, and I, it wasn't an easy meeting to capture. Maybe you wouldn't get the flavor of it, but you certainly got, uh, important facts. So, uh, I was okay with the minutes of the April 6th meeting. Any other comments, or?
Yeah, I, I agree. Degree of difficulty was high and job well-done. I'll approve, I'll move approval if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Please. Somebody? I can't do it. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, we adopt those. All right, and then the last thing on our agenda is Communications. Um, those were provided in the packet. I, we're not going to go through the Tecton, uh, report. Uh, I have an extra hour that we could spend on it if you'd like, or we'll skip it. Uh, but I do, I do think, uh, it's good to see the plans now, and we like to be kept in the loop on all of this stuff. It's, it's very helpful, all right? And with that, yeah, really quickly, Mr. Chairman, um, just want to wish a speedy recovery to our Representative Hampton. Uh, understand recently that he's experiencing some.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We need him back in Hartford, so, uh, get well soon.
Yeah, I'm always hesitant to do that because it's personal, but he did publish, uh, to make it known, and we wish John well. I, 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 I know he's been working very hard, uh, walking, I see him out on the trail or had this summer a lot, and I just hope he's okay, so.
Yeah, he's, it was on the patch this morning, so that's why I felt, uh, comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Agreed.
All right. All right, motion for adjournment?
I'll move. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Maybe not a world record, but a good, quick meeting.
Pretty close.
Yeah, yeah.
Move, move in the right direction, I'd like.
Yeah, for sure.